Here.
Here, Campbell, Drew, Donna.
Here.
Ludlow.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
Here.
Moore, are you still on the line? Yep, Moore, we see you. You'll give us a thumbs up that you're here.
Hey, Rick, I can't hear the roll call.
They called your name. You're here. Thanks.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, yes, I would. Um, one of the guests that we have is online. Cynthia Frost is coming tonight. Uh, goes by Cindy, I guess, and she will be our new, uh, uh, health, uh, school nurse person here. We have to call her a health coordinator. Um, she doesn't have her official school nurse, but she is going to be going to school this year to get those 12 hours for her school nursing license, things of that nature. But, um, we do have a little bit to hire her tonight. It's already scheduled for this meeting, um, later on this week and next week to make part of that transition. And then I will start her at the beginning of August. Uh, we have a few extra days this year to get ready to kind of close the protocol. All of the nurses record, talk to the 14 different school nurses, be involved in the five county health department nurse trainings, and things that are going on around, uh, our area, so to kind of up to date on what's going on in some of our 14 schools that we have a health department, we're looking at things there. So there'll be a lot of work to get ready for the first, uh, 17 days of August before we start off in the staff. Uh, this year, but. Uh, Cynthia's on. She's going to, uh, leave us when we will, if that exception like others, we won't be back.
Can you guys hear anything?
Heard the guest.
Hear anything?
It's really hard to hear.
Okay. I was just introducing Cynthia online, the person who you see is going to be the new school nurse.
Thank you.
I texted Rick, but I don't know if you'll look at it.
Roger, for what it's worth, I can hear you.
I'm sorry?
I can hear you.
Yeah. I can hear you guys, but nothing in the room.
Okay. Any of my tech listening people back here, younger supervisors know what I keep doing wrong? They're all saying it sounds a little bit muted, but I asked each one of them if they came in and if they could hear me.
Hey, Rick.
So.
Hey, Rick.
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Okay, so I think the issue is like when you're speaking, you're speaking to the board, which is away from the laptop, and the microphone is in the laptop. So I think if you can rotate the laptop so it's by you when you're speaking to the board, it will be a little bit clearer for us.
Okay, I'll try to speak more toward the laptop.
What you're doing right now is perfect.
Can you hear me better now, Roger? Comes up? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, the district update are some of the things you're gonna vote on tonight, which is going to be, uh, talking about the DD estimate as well as the reopening of school and some of our plans involved in that. That has been the focus of probably the last, uh, 20 days or so, uh, of meeting with, uh, multiple county health departments, um, meeting with all the superintendents, uh, in our 14, having a variety of different conversations. Um, things are changing, uh, on a weekly basis. Uh, we just changed some things about, uh, the 14-day, uh, COVID, um, quarantine. There's now 10 days that the CDC changed on Friday, and two of our health departments confirmed that we could put 10 days in our plan. So that could bring people back a little bit quicker. So those type of things, uh, are what we've been focused on in, in the district, um, over the last few weeks.
Okay, thank you. Um, topics for discussion in item five. So there's no modification to the agenda to my knowledge?
No, you got the legislative report from Paul.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my computer comes to the screen for that. Paul, do you have a legal course tonight for legislation?
Uh, yesterday, they, uh, filed the, the third consideration of House Bill 123, which is the Safety of Violence Education Students Act regarding school security and youth suicide awareness education training. Of course, uh, Governor Klein signed Senate Bill Four of this week. Move on here. Uh, of course, there was the, they signed a bill about the systemic racism act. They were referring, making it, uh, a health crisis now for racism. One of the bill, I can't seem to find it now. My computer glitched on me. I can't find it. I'm sorry about that. The center really didn't help. Really didn't do a whole lot this past month on schools. I'm worried about the pandemic. If I find that other email, I'll let you know later.
All right, thank you so much. Um, item five, topics for discussion, so five A, no modifications to agenda?
That's correct. No modifications to the agenda.
Um, five B, the recharging, um.
So we're talking about the reopening now. Uh, you should see on your screen the website, uh, that, uh, has been launched out to parents as well as we did a phone survey, um, telling students that we were looking forward to them coming back in our flexible learning plan. If they need to opt out of that option, to please, uh, let us know in our survey. Uh, so far, we're at less than 3% of students considering that option. So we don't think that's gonna have a huge impact, uh, to us, but we're rethinking, responding, restarting the school year. Um, I have Brad and Caleb in the room who were, uh, the designers, I guess, the crafters of the plan, but then they, uh, had a lot of input from the rest of the admin team in working on this and calculating program hours and, uh, how we'd be able to do this and get everybody, uh, still to certifications in most of the areas, including ideas like COS. We'll probably have to come some extra days or extra times to get into COS hours and things of that nature. And so this plan has, uh, even been shared as a draft, uh, with others, knowing that the board still had to vote on this. But other career centers, uh, are starting to pick with our plan and, and make some modifications to use it as well. Um, I'm in a group of seven career centers three weeks ago. Uh, five were going to be going face-to-face full-time, and two were planning on being online. Today it's four. They're planning on starting the year off on a flex model like ours. And only three right now are gonna try to go full face-to-face, and they believe their counties might also be in red by the time they get to August 15th and have to start in a hybrid flex-type model. If you notice, I'm not using the word blend because tonight you'll resend the blended model thing we voted on in June, because that's what I was told in May that we should be putting together. And then House Bill 164 passed and brought the remote learning plan in. And in the wisdom of our legislators, you can't have both of them going at the same time. Even though we're kind of doing both of them at the same time, uh, you had to pick and choose one. So you have to resend your declaration for blended and vote to approve the House 64, uh, remote learning plan, which I submitted to all of you. That plan is what I will email to ODE tomorrow. So, uh, we have till August 21st, but I will be sending that in tomorrow. So, um, Kelsey put the, this information that you see here on the website, uh, has done a really great job in communicating out what we're thinking. We'll be starting with some videos, uh, as well in the future to, uh, parents and information. As you approve the plan, we'll launch more information out there to make sure people understand what our plan is. Would anybody have any questions right now, even discussion topic for the administrators in the room who really crafted it? For those who didn't watch the video that we sent out, uh, to you on this, as I explained, the whole PowerPoint, our concept really is kind of that college idea that career tech is your major. And then we have your core academic classes that you'll get to visit and be with your teachers and have some lessons each week with them as well. But they'll be more doing their things through a flipped classroom of being remote learning and academics. But you can't really do the career tech without touching the hands-on. Can't do the phlebotomy stick. You can't cut hair. You can't change a brake. You know, you can't weld a piece of metal without having that hands-on. And so we really tried to design a plan that we felt that regardless of our 14 and where they might be in a color code, and if you know right now, we have Union County in red, and we have our other counties in yellow with a one or two on the verge of being orange, probably by tomorrow when the new things come out, uh, that whatever color that might be, if we could consistently have kids be able to catch their High Point bus and get here, we could continue with hands-on learning. You know, if kids self-monitor and do what we're asking them to do to take their temperature and not come here if they have any symptoms, then we can try to keep a clean environment as best as we possibly can and be able to continue getting the career tech learning without maybe having to go to full remote uh, as soon as, 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 as one group being in purple or something of that nature. And so that was the design concept, was to try to give it that kind of college feel, uh, but have a plan that maybe we could stay more consistent. Um, I was just in a phone call yesterday where people were talking about, well, if we go to face-to-face, I want to be able to do it for at least two weeks. And then if I have to switch to blended, I want at least to make it two weeks at a time, that I'm not changing all the time. Well, you could say two weeks, but the very next week you could be in purple and be in full remote and not be able to do that kind of hybrid model type thing. And so, so we wanted to try to avoid a lot of that jumping and flipping around and do our best to see if we could do it, uh, and, and try to keep it consistent. And so this is why it's our plan for the year. And it's also why we're not gonna try to go face-to-face in the middle. It has to do with loco and setting up our classes. And we're not setting up like other schools, maybe just traditionally trying to set up their periods and have people just come in during that period of time. We tried to design it with longer periods in a different way to be able to do it for our lab time, to make sure we were getting our lab time in. And so that has a little bit different feel in the, in the loco, setting up a courses process and stuff like that, uh, where we couldn't bounce back and forth as easy. So I just wanted to make sure you understood that. The second part of this, uh, discussion topic is our orientation night, and I'm gonna let both Kelsey and, uh, Ms. Ream, Reamey, talk to you about that. So Tanya and Kelsey.
If, uh, if I can just pass something on from those who can virtually.
Yep.
If, if we are speaking, uh, we need to speak towards the front of the room and loudly and clearly, especially if we're in the back in our heads turn, uh, they can't hear us.
Okay. So you guys might want to come up here and speak a little closer to the microphone here.
Um, Dr. Smith.
Yes.
Before we move on, could I just ask Caleb and Brad, are there, is, is there any concern or was there any discussion on the Fridays, um, not having students in the building on Fridays? Do you think the juniors and seniors will get confused on what Friday they're supposed to be here and when they're not supposed to be here?
I think it's all the communication. We've tried really hard to create a calendar to be able to, um, discuss with the students the first time we see them at, at orientation, that we're gonna kind of color-code it, like juniors are gonna come on red days, seniors are gonna come on blue days. Here's your calendar. We're gonna have some sort of naming convention in the school when they come in that week, showing that color, saying, on Friday, you're coming here. So it, so hopefully they'll get that visual cue and the reminder from their teachers that this is this week when you're coming.
Okay.
And I'll add one more that, to that in terms of communication, um, that we've actually posted the calendar on the website. It's what we're sharing out to families and students. Um, we've also included it on the website calendar that we've labeled every other Friday, what juniors are attending, what seniors are attending. So it's labeled on our home, on the homepage of the website. And then we've also ordered, um, fridge magnets that actually list the entire calendar and color coordinates, that way families can have it all in their fridge and see the dates that they're supposed to be attending.
Good job.
Okay, so we're gonna touch on student orientation, and it is gonna change, obviously. We're gonna have two different events, so it's going to be the same event, but one night for juniors, one night for seniors, very similar to what our schedule will be. Um, it will be August 12th and August 13th. Um, we're just gonna have four stations. We tried to limit it to what, what do they need before they start? What do they have to have and what do they need? So they'll come in and they'll get their uniforms, they'll pick up their forms, and their schedules drop off any forms they've filled out. Kelsey's doing a great job getting the forms out there early so that they can print them, have them come to orientation ready. Um, laptop distribution, so they can get signed in, logged in, ready to go when they get here. And then we'll have student stations marked with safe social distancing. Robert's already made sure that has happened, and in the cafeteria, they can sit and fill out their student information forms, so we can get them loaded right away. Those were really the four things we really wanted to make sure happen that night. But the changes are going to be that there'll be two events instead of one. Staff, students, and families will be wearing their mask and following all safety protocols. They'll be one way in and one way out logistically. They'll come in this way, they'll leave through Sloan and by the ECE room. They'll have limited number of families. Sometimes they will show up with their mom, their sister, their brother, their uncle, their cousin, everybody to go see their labs and meet their teacher, which is great. But because of the number of people we're going to allow in at a time, then we can only do one or two family members at the most. There'll be no food, there'll be no prizes, there'll be no lab visits, um, no need for all the staff to be here all at the same time. We did do videos instead of a live parent session. Um, so those are really the changes, and that's logistically how it's gonna run. But it is gonna be fun. We are gonna bring the excitement, and we are going to welcome our students because we're glad they chose to be here. So those are the logistics, and Kelsey's gonna talk about communication about that.
All right, so how we're communicating orientation, um, we have emails that are set up that will be going out to parents as well as students. Uh, we've also pulled all the information that if a parent has two parent emails on file, that information is being sent to both emails. So if a family has three email addresses on file, all of those devices and all of those email addresses are getting the information. We want to make sure that families are informed of what the orientation schedule looks like. In addition to the emails, there are also gonna be, um, social media posts that go out, uh, information on our website. So as we send information out, they can redirect directly back to the website. And on the website, as Tanya mentioned, instead of doing an in-person parent session, um, as they go through and talk about transportation, attendance, the class schedule, all of those snippets have been recorded as a video, and all of those snippet videos are gonna be posted on the website, and that's what we're gonna be sharing out with families. So that way, if they have questions, they can watch the videos rather than trying to read through a extremely long webpage. They can just watch the videos that relate to each topic that they need.
And the app.
And the app. Thank you for the reminder. Um, also, everything will be communicated through Ohio High Point's app. Um, that families will be encouraged to download the app. That way, um, they can select push notifications, and as we send out announcements or reminders, those push notifications will go directly to their phone and they'll be alerted. So. Oh, the, one more thing that we're doing. Um, for all staff and students, they're gonna be getting a welcome back, um, health and safety bag. And inside that bag is going to be an Ohio High Point mask. Um, there's going to be Ohio High Point hand sanitizer that they can clip onto their book bags or to their purses or bags, whatever they're carrying. Um, and then there's also going to be breath mints as well. So they'll have a nice little kit that when they come in, they'll have all of those fun goodies that they can take with them. And now I think that's it. Am I missing anything?
I think that's it. Kelsey also did signs for our teachers that we'll be putting in our yards. So to welcome them back as well. Yeah. Any questions for us about orientation?
Online, could you hear that?
I could hear it.
Yes, sounded great.
Great.
Yep. We're getting, we're improving this process.
So for, I'm in five C, we need to set, um, evaluations, maybe. And Kim, you're on that. Are you, are you going to set it for your August?
Do you want to meet before the 19th meeting? Just come one time? I mean, it only takes you five minutes to say how much you love me. No laughing, no laughing on the computer. I must not have said that in the right way.
Let me see, fourth week, so if we're gonna start at six, that's a week time. All right, then, um.
Is Chuck Buck on that too?
Yes.
Chuck, did you hear that? The 19th at five for the superintendent evaluation committee?
Okay, 19th at five?
We have the meeting on the 19th at six. I just want to meet before that meeting.
Okay.
At five o'clock.
All right.
Chuck's okay with that too?
Thank you. So, I'm in five C, facilities and grounds committee, um, construction, um, bracketing on October the fifth.
Yeah, I would just say the next couple there are, we will be doing, uh, a page turn over the estimate for, or the idea of the, uh, GMP hopefully on the 5th. You'll be voting on that on the 7th, uh, so that we can continue to move the project forward, um, as, as they go through that. So, um, just make sure you have your calendars, just kind of giving your placeholders there.
Rock, the step.
Right.
And then it has Capitol Conference on here, do you know whether that's gonna happen or not?
So far, the dates are still there. We haven't heard what Capitol Conference is going to do. But at this point, we just wanted, once again, put that placeholder that Capitol Conference is on the calendar at this time.
I know they just announced, uh, two or three, uh, key, uh, speakers, uh, yesterday, so. So anybody interested, um, will be setting that. I think we have to register in August. Um, five C, August investment review session, it's gonna be August the 19th at 6:00 PM. It's the superintendent evaluation committee at 5:00 PM. And then five H, the regular August, um, board meeting, will be the 26th at 7:00 PM in August. So we'll move on to item six, the motion in the second to approve the minutes from the June 24th, 2020 meeting.
We're moving on to approve the minutes. Buck has said Buck.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Who was second?
Buzz.
Lazo, okay.
If you're being, go across me.
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Burroughs? Campbell? Yeah. Ludlow?
Ludlow? Yes. Yes.
McDonald? Yeah. McDaniel? Yeah. Moore?
Moore?
Yes.
Okay. Wallace?
Yeah. Yeah.
Wright?
Wright?
Yes.
Okay.
And Boswell.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, item seven, um, um, executive session, consider the matters required to be kept confidential by the two, these, we find, so 121.12. The motion, traffic to go into executive session.
Buck?
Rick Clark, you Buck?
Will Hopery? Buck?
Yes.
Burroughs? Yes. Campbell? Yes. Donna? Yes. Ludlow?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Allison? Patel?
Yes.
Reeves? Yeah. Savage? Stanford? Wallace?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Boswell? And Pervert?
Yes.
Okay, I'll ask everybody but Robert to leave here for executive session tonight. Those online, administrators who are online, you can leave. Cynthia, you not need to come back. Um, and then we'll turn it over to the attorneys. We are now being recorded again. Randy, can you give me a still text? Sean?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm in, Rick. Can you hear me? Dan, we can hear you. Yep, I'm texting Sean right now.
Is our beat reported?
So we'll just take a couple more minutes here and let Sean come into the meeting. Brandon, you're FaceTiming. Do you want me? All right, okay.
Did you walk on yet? And seven people. No pressure. They don't, they don't seem very happy. All right. This is really just your last year?
No.
I saw it was.
It was for Valentine's.
Yeah, yeah.
They did not mention you on this for God.
Okay, yeah, well, congratulations on your service. How many years?
So Randy, we're a few spots away from the agenda for your part. I'm a Madam President, if you want to go on with the treasures area. We'll see if Sean gets on in between.
Buck.
Too late on that one, Buck.
Oh.
Hopefully, if you haven't had an opportunity yet to, what is the June financial statements? You'll take some. It's not only this June's financial information. It's this as compared to 24 previous Junes as well. So it gets you a really good feel for what this school year looks like compared to those in the past as well.
Can you hear him, Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
So the general fund will add about $600,000 to its ending cash balance. That is higher than what we estimated in September. The funny part of that is that as we started out, it looked like our expenses were going to exceed our estimate by a few percentage points. And, and you know, I always mention that when you have a $16 million budget, one percentage point is worth $160,000. So it only takes a few percentage points to rack up some real money. But it looked like we were going to spend about 95% of our budget as compared to the 90 that we had estimated. Covid closure that probably slowed down our purchasing of consumables, supplies, and services. In turn, brought that expense variance right back in line to the point that the final total general fund expenses were within $2,000 of the September estimate. And that's $10,000 off of a $16 million estimate. So.
Sean with Marker.
Ended in June for us.
Thank you, Sean.
To be very close. Pick up the additional dollars that we had not anticipated because on the revenue side. And so we were about 96% accurate on our revenue estimate. But of course, that 4% multiplied by $150,000 totals about an additional $600,000 in revenues that we weren't anticipating. Story that the general fund ended with $9,362,000, which is the highest general fund in ending cash balance that Ohio High Point has had in schools this year. That out. Because we had these discussions over the winter in our small group sessions, that $0.4 million is roughly equal to 220 operating days of cash support. That really doesn't mean anything because we never really talked about, you know, who we are. We always, we always budget with a bottom line in mind, but we've never extended that to the point that we have targeted general fund balances that we want to hit one year out, three years out, five years out. I think those are very worthy discussions for our board to have. So that when we do talk this cash balance in days, it has no meaning to us, not just necessarily what it's been known with in our schools. On itself, I want to note that in the the financial report this month, there is a special report that includes all of our commercial paper investments that we held in the course of the year. That's in our hyper-advised code requirement. We need to report that to you and to report that to them on a annual basis. General fund to our Perkins grant. That advance is a temporary loan. It will be repaid by the end of next school year. It'll be next year before we receive 100% of our Perkins funds.
The only thing I would like to add to, you know, that information that Eric has shared is, is this year, you know, I have asked Eric, that wasn't part of the five-year forecast, it may necessarily to add some funds into Covid for us to be able to get plastic barriers, to get a UV light, temperature things and different types of stuff. So there'll be some adjustment to some of the numbers, I think, in September. But a lot of that has to do with, you know, we're trying to make sure that we have a safe environment here, that we have everything set for students to come back as well. So, so those are, those are items that really weren't necessarily thinking about or even anticipating in the middle of that shutdown of what might be required to reopen schools. But we are spending some money and we should be receiving a couple of grants. We've applied for two. We've been told that, well, we applied for one that was just came to us naturally through, I think, the CARES Act. And we've applied for a small rural school grant that I have specifically targeted that money to use for online curriculum, hotspots, things of that nature. And so we've been told that we've been awarded, but the funds haven't come to us yet and been awarded. So we'll have to work through some of that really to start the school as well. But, but just know some of those things are out there too.
Campbell. Donovan.
Yes.
Mike Ludlow.
Yes.
McMahon.
Yes.
Yes.
Roger Moore.
Roger Moore.
Mouser. Patel.
Reeves.
Yes.
Savage. James Wallace.
Yes.
Brian Wright.
Yes.
Boswell. Brooke.
Yes.
Chuck Buck?
Yes.
Roger Moore, are you there?
I still see his R.
No, we keep going on nine. Like I said, there. So I think I must talk right there, 9A. Just so thankful for the service of Amy McCartney, our school nurse health safety coordinator, and Deb Workman, the architect director over satellites for the many years who basically formulated satellites and established a huge program that we have. Both of these people have worked tirelessly for the district. I'm sad to see their resignations, but I'm also excited for both of them and what they have accomplished and what they want to do for their next chapter and that idea. So the other we're employing, as I already said, we've, I think the rest is relatively standard of employment type things. You see 9F, as I talked about, where we're rescinding our blended model declaration. 9G is the remote learning plan. And 9H is the plan that I talked about in reopening with the district safety protocols. The safety protocols have been approved by the Logan County Health Department. We still are meeting with them weekly as things adjust and change. But our plan to reopen was shared with the board tonight as well. We're excited to have Cynthia Frost to come on in this different environment here. We're glad to have somebody who will be with us at the start of the school year to help us navigate the health and safety of our students through this reopening. And so, as I said, she'll be starting with us pretty much right away type of thing. We typically have our tuition reimbursement done in June. And this was just one that the dates didn't line up for him to finish his class and get his grades in time. And so I waived the deadline for him because it really wasn't anything within his control. He submitted to us by June 28. As soon as he had all of his information and grades were posted from the professor and stuff like that, he got it into us. So we have an extra one of those tonight. So that is everything in nine, Madam President.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have questions or comments?
Any questions or comments?
And again, the people that are retiring, they did some credit act that's our corporate base. So we are happy for them. And we just don't, I'll rank it.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
McConnell.
Yes.
McMahon.
Yes.
Moore? Mouser?
Yes, staying on my beat.
We'll have to stay on everything because we have to take these separate, alright?
That was my fault. I told him wrong.
Patel?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Stanford? Wallace?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Boswell? Brooke?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Burroughs?
Yes.
And Roger Moore?
Motion carries. Item 10 is the board resolution and action items. And A is the design development submission and estimate and performance of the construction documents designed based for the building project.
McMahon.
So online, we have both Sean and Randy are here from Thomas and Marker. We have Dan Freitag from the architect firm. See the estimate, facilities and grounds. You've been walked through the estimate. Right now, at around $31.5 million. We do have some money, as we have talked about, on the equipment that's built into there. And so we know we're keeping this close to our budget range that we have discussed previously. I don't know if any of you have any questions for architect or the construction manager at risk.
Now that there's no questions, I.
Ludlow?
Yes.
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Moore? Mouser?
No.
Patel?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Stanford? Wallace?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Boswell?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Burroughs?
Yes.
Campbell?
No.
Moore?
Motion carries. And then we are now maybe then to move into executive session to discuss the evaluation process.
Will you have any business to follow afterwards, do you think, Madam President? Or you just want?
I've already released the statement to the press regarding his evaluation. And I think there might be, there might be one action item that you would add.
Yeah. Kelsey, you just call the press or whatever. I know you, I'll come out and talk to you about what's on the agenda if you want.
Okay, so a motion is expected to take regular session. There's one other person out hiding that we will probably get into executive discussion.
Ludlow? Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Moore? Mouser?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Stanford? Wallace?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Burroughs?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Roger Moore?
Yes.
Roger Moore is back. Okay. I'm going to put 8:30 and I'm going to stop recording. And Dan and Sean and all you guys can go. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Everybody still here?
Everybody still here?
Yeah.
Anybody fall asleep?
No.
Okay, sounds like they're there.
Okay, so we have a motion we'd like to make.
We'd like to move to increase the salary to 2.5% effective August 1st.
I'll second.
Buck, second. Okay, thank you, Board.
Questions or comments?
Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
McConnell?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mouser?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes. Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Burroughs?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
And Donovan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn, motion is second.
Second.
McMahon and Buck?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Okay, I'm stopping the recording. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Night. See ya.